Good morning. Welcome to Monday budget budget workshop today. Okay.
Kathy Funk-Maxster, Finance Director. I've given you some handouts and so I'd like to go over those. Our topic today is property tax levies.
Okay.
And the road levies. And this is one of our revenue pieces. A significant revenue piece for the county, particularly for the general fund. And so what I'd start with is, and I'm not going to take the whole allotted time probably, unless you just have lots of questions. This is pretty straightforward. Somewhat straightforward. So I have Emily here just in case to back me up since I'm very new to all this. And haven't actually gone through the certification process for or road levies and general levies. So your first chart that you have should be County General Fund values and County General Fund levy amounts. And so this is just a historical to show you the assessed values over a period of time from 2019 to the preliminary which we have for 2024. And so we've gone from 11.8 million in assessed values to currently 19 million in assessed values. Does it sound right? Okay, hold on.
That's a billion fifty.
Oh, billions, not millions, billions. Sorry. Yeah, comma, comma, comma.
What's a zero?
Sorry. Nineteen billion. We went from 11.8 billion to 19 billion in 2024 for preliminary assessed value. So as you can see, some years the increase was larger than others. So we're showing an increase from 23 assessed values to 24 assessed values of 3.94. And I think that's indicative of what's going on in the real estate market. And so yes, come sit with me, Emily, since this is my first time talking about. Yes, come sit with me, Emily, since this is my first time talking about levies.
And I'm, I'm kind of filling in because Janine is my chief deputy. She does levies.
She is the expert.
She's out of the office. So when she called, I was like, well, I can come try to help. So while she's talking about assessed values, just remember that that is just part of the equation. So you guys set the budget, it gets divided by the total assessed value to get the rate. So all talking about the assessed value is doing is telling you whether or not that rate is going to go up or down.
Right.
On that part.
Yeah.
Because of the statutory limit.
But we are capped. If it weren't for new construction, this would be a one percent climb.
Right.
No, the assessed value has no cap on it.
No, 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 I'm talking about the levy.
The levy, yes. And then you look at your levy rates, and these are not in billions, these are in millions. So on your levy rates, you've gone from eighteen million to twenty four, twenty four preliminary is twenty million eight hundred and fifteen thousand. And so you see the increases are a little bit higher than the one percent, which is the statutory limit. But that's because of new construction. It's also a function of whether your previous year, whether you banked some of your capacity. But we've built in for this twenty twenty four, we built in, it accumulates and so it's it includes that bank capacity. If that makes sense. Because in twenty, because in twenty twenty two, you did not take, for example, you did not take your one percent allowed increase.
And we took it in twenty three.
Well, in twenty three. Yeah, maybe so, but, but I, I think some of it's, I don't, I don't think all of it was taken. So.
You have last years.
So last year's, no, I don't have it with in front of me, but last year's when we looked at the number, it was taking point five nine percent instead of the one percent. Plus new construction. Yeah. So, but the twenty twenty four is the preliminary amount that's available to be levied. Of course, as I said, that's preliminary. And we'll be finalizing those numbers after, I think, November the eighth.
Hopefully before it.
Okay, hopefully before then, but November the eighth, we can't finalize any of these numbers until all of the rate, the values are in.
Is this information on the website? Is it on the assessor's page?
No, so this is all preliminary information. We give this out to the districts just so they can try to kind of see where their stuff's going to come in for budgeting. As she said, early November is when we're supposed to certify.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to go someplace.
Oh, but I, unless she's put it on, ours is not.
Okay, the, the reason is we get pinged and then you get pinged. And they think that we are cooperating with you to feather our beds in some way. And this is just the, the excellent information that nineteen through twenty two makes it really clear. So whatever the assessed value happens, it really hardly impacts the general fund values.
Right, right.
And, and people don't understand that because they don't want to understand it because they vote for all the other things that scale up with the assessed value. Like the schools, the levy, the O and M levies, yeah.
We, we put out an annual report that doesn't have this information because we're not part of your budget process.
Yeah.
But we do show assessed values. We show what different budgets are for the districts. We allo, we show the allocation of tax dollars of where it's going. It's just a matter of whether people want to understand the information that's there.
Except you don't have the other side of the equation, the other levy or the actual dollar amounts that came into the general fund. Or do you?
I'd, I'd be happy if you would like on our budget page, we could put this because it does show you that while assessed values have, have increased at a higher rate, your levy increases are much lower.
Yeah.
Than the assessed value increase. If that's, that that would be helpful.
I, I, you know, a big chore I felt was trying to get the public to understand the part they play in things and this would be a big piece of it.
I was gonna say, on the last page of our annual report is a, a page, it's called like a a story of one house, I think. And we picked one house years and years ago before my time. And it just shows what that particular house has done for assessed value over time. And then it breaks down all the levies they pay and what, what has changed. So it does show that your value can go down and your taxes can go up and your value can go up and your taxes can go down. But I don't think we have this particular thing. We, there's a ton of information. I'll go back and look at the annual report and see if it shows something similar.
Yeah, don't, don't forget that anything longer than a couple of pages is typically cast aside and I'm not defending it. I just know it is. So this says it all in one two pages.
This is, yeah, this is the only thing I would worry about is I'm trying to disassociate the assessed value from anything that makes it look like a rate is generating the assessed value. So I'm very careful on how we present the information. Because it's the opposite, right?
Right.
But I'm, I'm willing to put information on our website also to help people understand that, so.
So in the twenty four, you do not have the one percent increase.
No, it's in, it's in there.
It's in there.
It's in there. And this, so what I'm presenting today is I'm making an assumption that, that the commissioners will approve a levy that approximates what we're statutorily limited to. And not bank, not bank anything is what I'm and that's my, my recommendation is that we take our, our fully allotted levy limit and assess that so that we have funds, revenue funds available for such things as the collective bargaining agreements that we have this coming twenty twenty four, which we have a lot of those.
So, so Kathy, you said to assess that one percent, that's not accurate. You want us to levy that one percent.
I'm sorry.
Assessment involves department and its values. So, and it, but it's, it's an easy term to mix up.
Yeah.
And, and she.
The levy.
She was, yeah.
So the other thing, without Janine being here, I'm making an assumption, but I'm fairly certain I'm correct on this. So when she sends out the preliminary values, we haven't closed the rolls. We're still making some adjustments. So there could be minor tweaks to that. Plus, until we are completely finished, they don't give us our state assessed increases or decreases.
And you have one major industry still challenging? Or?
That trial was completed Thursday.
Thursday and no decision yet or?
Oh, we should know in hopefully a hundred and eighty days.
In a hundred and eighty days.
That's a lot of Thursdays.
So those numbers don't include that assessment.
That's not in here, but the state assessed utilities. So like BNSF, that gets assessed or assessed at the state level and then proportioned off to us. So those type of things could change a little bit, but in general, as she said, it's a preliminary number to give you an idea.
And so what I, what I wanted to impress upon the commissioners is that it looks like if we were to take up to our allowed levy amount that we would be looking at about six hundred thousand of additional revenue generated for twenty twenty four for general fund.
Would you repeat that?
So if you look at the difference between twenty twenty three levy amount.
Oh, got it. All right.
And twenty twenty four maximum levy amount based upon preliminary numbers, it's about a six hundred thousand dollar difference in revenue.
And we still have that one year we banked.
Well, that, that's included in the amount for twenty twenty four.
Well, we're taking the one we banked plus the one for that year.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question real quick? So do these numbers include their road shift?
No, no, this, these numbers do not include any shift between the road fund and the general fund.
So prior to twenty two, I think you guys had shifted every year. And so each year it was a little bit different. I think some were like two point two. There's one that was three, something.
It got up to two point five.
These totals down here do not include that shifted money you guys were shifting. So you guys have gone down on general fund with not taking that shift anymore.
Yeah, I, I think I heard the chairman some time ago say he would be generally against the levy shift on the roads and the only, I, I have no problem with that. I would moderate that saying circumstances may or may not want us to do something there, but it's important to understand that these levy rates are not budget based. They're figured out somewhere in Olympia. So in other words, it's, it's kind of an arbitrary number. So to say that we're stealing from the road fund already presumes that there's a magic number that is owed to the road fund. And I have a very hard time trying to figure all that out because we, we do grants all over the place. So, you know, normally you'd say, okay, we've got this public works, maintenance and operation stuff, and that should translate to a dollar amount and we should levy that on the road fund, but that's not how we operate.
The only thing I would comment on the shift, and again, I'm a, a proponent of not taking money that you don't need. I was a huge advocate for banked capacity if you don't need it. The only note I would say on the road shift is to keep in mind that when it is county road dollars, you are taking that amount and dividing it by the assessed value in just outside the cities. So the roads is collected from just the county residents, not anybody in the cities. Once you shift that money.
The non-city residents. We're all county residents.
But you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, unincorporated territory.
Bigger. So it just changes who is collecting. So when the shift stopped, the people in the counties taxes actually outside the city limits in the county, their taxes went up and the inside city limits people's taxes would have gone down for that shift.
Do you?
Lack of shift.
The, the, the shift increases the urban taxes.
In cities.
That's the, that's the shift.
So by not shifting, it increases outside.
Do, do you remember offhand an amount like is that statistically ten dollars per parcel or a thousand dollars per parcel or?
Yeah, your, your shift was running about two million a year and then it went to three million and then it, and then it went to zero shift.
Right, but that doesn't help me answer the question.
I have, I just. This is roads right here. Okay. So your assessed. Hold on, I could give you an idea. Assessed value of district. So the assessed value in the roads portion is ten point five billion. The assessed value in the whole county, everybody is nineteen billion. So you're adding nine billion dollars worth of distribution.
That, that isn't particularly helpful for the taxpayer. Because and, and you were asking about the, how the taxpayer is affected. I know that my, my county assessment portion went down when we stopped the shift. How much did it go down? Not by very much because we have, how many parcels?
Of fifty eight thousand.
Fifty eight thousand. So you, you know, a half, a half a million dollars divided by fifty eight. I mean, that's, that's a tough way of doing it, but that's one way of doing it. It's, it's, it's a small, it's a relatively small amount. I had nobody. I was worried because I was an advocate for the shift because at the time the road department had a hundred percent reserve. They weren't using the money they were collecting. And they've since changed and they've brought it back down. And we kind of agree that about sixty percent reserve would be adequate because of the the unpredictable nature of emergencies and Tower Road is one of those examples where you need some capacity to do that. So we've been able, interestingly, there's another way of changing the allocation of, of property taxes. And that's called a diversion. And the law allows road taxes to be diverted for road related law enforcement. And you have to document everything. And it was a real headache. And I said, well, why do we have to go through that headache? Why don't we just shift? Because you don't have to document it because it's a levy shift. And nobody told me why. And my constituents' taxes went up. But again, it wasn't significant enough. I didn't, nobody pointed that out. How come my taxes went up so much?
That's the thing is I, I don't go into any meeting with anybody making budgetary decisions to try to help you decide what you're going to do. I just believe that everybody making decisions should understand how those decisions affect different things. And that's one thing is just understanding that the shift while beneficial for some reasons does have an effect on who's paying and how much they're paying.
Yeah, in keeping with that, there's another reason, which is we learned how to monetize the landfill. And can you imagine where we'd be if we didn't have the landfill?
Oh, Carolyn would be up here every meeting.
Yeah. And so in the, the years prior, the landfill was, was a liability actually. And as we learned to monetize it, we've been able to not do a levy shift with impunity.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure it's accurate to say it was a liability because as an enterprise fund, it has to balance. So its revenues have to match the, the requirements. We weren't making any money though. I mean, that's very clear.
Right.
The tenant way didn't quote make us money. It was a service that, that.
Yeah, liability, you, I, I don't know how much we can say, but you remember a meeting actually in this room where we were advised that there were some serious issues. And that spun off, let's figure out what we're going to do with this thing. And that's when we learned yeah, it's a problem on the one hand, but it's an advantage on the other. Let's capitalize on the advantage.
So are you asking us for direction?
Uh, yes, I'm asking for direction because tomorrow I'm going to bring to you total revenues, total expenses as they stand right now. And I'm, I'm forecasting to use the maximum county levy amount that we have here in our revenue forecast for both roads. I mean, for roads and for general fund. And I made the assumption no shifts and the assumption that we would use our full capacity levy capacity.
Be, before answer that for the assessor, this is a time where the people need to understand that if their property values are assessed down, the general fund doesn't necessarily show down.
Correct. So regardless of what assessed value does, whatever you guys decide your budget is and you pass in resolution, as long as I don't cap it based on statutory caps, that's what will get collected. So even if next year assessed value is cut in half, you would still collect the same amount of money. It does, it, it doesn't depend on the assessed value.
Oh, I would, I would probably say that wouldn't be true. If your assessments went down fifty percent, we wouldn't be spending that much money. We wouldn't be able to spend that much money. There's no way.
We would collect the same amount.
Yeah, you know, he.
Well, legally we could, but practically, there's no way. I mean, if everybody's assessment went down fifty percent, you know, the taxes would double and there's no way that would.
This is a multi, no, the tax, tax rate.
Exactly the same.
Yeah.
So if I, let's say I go rogue because I get frustrated with the state all the time anyway. So let's say I just decided I was going to do whatever I wanted to do and take my lashings. And I said, I'm just going to assess everybody at fifty percent instead of a hundred percent because I think everybody's happier at fifty percent. As long as I'm equitable and fair and do fifty percent, everybody's taxes would stay exactly the same.
Yep.
It would not change at all. It would double their rate. But it would collect.
Their dollar amount.
Yep, their dollar amount would stay exactly the same.
Now, the agencies that would hurt would be the fire districts.
I was gonna say, you would run into some um probably junior districts who that would have some problems. Um, because we'd start hitting rate maxes. Um, and they would lose out. And I won't even go into that because I don't fully understand it. Janine could explain it to you about buying out junior districts and and all that, but um. Again. The rate would just double, the same would be collected.
Is it true you're gonna give Janine a PhD?
She is very good. She's been doing this for a very long time and she's very good at uh levies. Unfortunately, I gave her some vacations.
Well, the spreadsheet is fabulous.
Well, this is, this is from you guys.
No, no, I meant uh your spreadsheet where you determine things. That's quite a complex piece.
Well, and there's so many intricacies that go into levies. It is very beneficial for us to have somebody that is very good at doing it.
So Emily, I've got a a question on on the assessment process. When one of the mills has a major capital improvement. When do we feel the impact of the value of that new building? Is it as they build and you assume there's value added? Or once the building is completed and value is actually demonstrated be?
So as a building is being built, specifically ones that take a long time, there is value being added as progress is made. So once a year we do new construction, so whatever state that building is at. While we're doing new construction, we will capture that. So let's say we go out there and they're thirty percent complete with the building. Thirty percent of that value would get added. And then next year, let's say we go out and there's sixty percent, we add that additional thirty percent. And then when they're complete, we we complete it. But that would show up in your new construction.
And I assume that's a highly nonlinear scale, right? A third done just means I spent a third of the money, but I'm still eighty percent to go.
Well, so uh we have charts that break down the progression of buildings. So let's say we walk in and they've got framing done. They've got this, that and the other. We can put that on a chart and it will say, okay, based on this information, it's a it's roughly this complete.
I'm sure that's state informed. The charts, I mean, they're developed.
Actually, that comes from Marshall and Swift. It's a nationally.
Uh, the reason I asked is that uh if I, if memory serves me correct. We've got two major developments in the works, the box plant at at. Bad Rock?
West Rock.
West Rock. Okay, and then I think the other, the paper line out at Norpac, which should be pretty close to being done.
Forget the divert plan.
The divert plan is coming online later, but um. Those two projects haven't been full yet. They're not at a hundred percent yet. Cause they're in process.
They're a hundred percent. And when it comes to the industrial sites, I also want to note that. This is kind of getting away from budget, but um. There are multiple ways to assess property or to value property, especially with commercial. We don't always use the direct cost approach on valuing property. That doesn't always give you the actual value of the property, of what it costs. Um, and so I'm not entirely sure that you would see a one for one. Um, value change if we're doing an income approach on the income producing properties, so.
You still have to figure out what the fair market would be for a box plant when there's only one box plant in the state. Right? I mean, there's a little challenge to to figure out the fair market, but. You have to go nationwide, I suppose, or wha- wha- whatever the law allows. They've they've got this system pers- prescribed for you.
Yep, we've got it figured out.
Mister Chairman, what's the fair market value of a box plant?
Don't say it on record.
Not enough.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying fair market value among other things is one of those things and that's why. You have a hard time with trying to tell people it's your best guess at a market value. When I go to a Realtor and I want to sell my house. I'm gonna tell them edge it up.
Well, and that's it. It's an appraisal is an opinion of value.
Right, there's nothing exact.
Yep, you ask two appraisers, you're gonna get two different.
Commissioner, with all due respect, that's true unless your last name is Trump.
My my last name is Trump?
No, we we find that often, uh we'll have people call in one year and want their assessed value lowered. And then the next year they decide to sell it and they call in and ask us to raise it, so. We don't make determinations like that, so. Back to budget.
Kathy, what a. From my, from my perspective, just just mine, I would tell you the same thing I told you the other day. Work the budget with your assumptions as long as we understand the assumptions when we're looking at the whole. Budget, then we can make adjustments if we want to at that point in time.
Right, and I and I just wanted to be able to show you, this is the number that I'll be using in my assumptions. Um, for general fund, it's the twenty million eight fifteen thousand. And for road fund, it's gonna be the fourteen million. Levy amount. With with no shift.
There are, there are these sort of key decisions and I I think we. Allow me, I think we need to decide them maybe even here today as to. Uh, how we're gonna gonna deal with that. For example, I think the road levy shift. We're not gonna do that. It's my guess, right? And we can decide here right now and say there will be no road levy shift.
Well. I I.
That would be my guess.
I think uh. Yeah, you can announce how you feel, but we haven't had a public hearing and that might. Might get us in trouble if we announce ahead of time, ahead of a public hearing, that we're not gonna do this or we're gonna do that.
But we can't have a public hearing unless we have a straw man and she's trying to put together a straw man that can be heard. Otherwise, we'll we'll never get the budget done. At the end, it'll be presented to the public. And uh by then, hopefully, we've had all the arguments taken care of, so we know how to respond and. We can always change based on the arguments, but we gotta be someplace.
My my preference, what I'd like to see are figures that would work it, work out the levy without the one percent. Go ahead and bank that. Think if your numbers are correct, that it'd still be higher than uh. Then um. Twenty two.
This is one thing that I I I don't recall decently. When we banked the one percent, what are we banking?
The capacity. So this is what Kathy and I were talking about. Um, and you guys don't have this. This is the worksheet we send out to the people doing the budget work. But uh at the top, it shows the highest lawful levy. So even though you guys didn't take the highest before, every year. The worksheet starts with that highest lawful levy and then it adds the one percent and it adds the new construction. And so. It's just keeping it there and it's adding the one percent every year. So even if you don't take it. We're going to start your calculation next year as if you did take it.
We're, so we we are not really banking one percent as a percentage. We're banking the dollar amount. And so if we could have taken two hundred thousand dollars this year and next year assessed values climb all over the place. We're not at one percent, we're two hundred thousand dollars. Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to understand.
And my recommendation is based upon what I'm seeing in our request and in what we anticipate for expenses. Um, I'm saying as far as budget, I'm recommending that you do take your capacity. You go all the way to your capacity. Based upon the things that we're seeing in our expenses that are, we're going to be faced with after collective bargaining. Things like that, so. So if it's okay, I'm gonna use the twenty million eight fifteen in our estimates for revenue.
Hey, except our colleague ventured to guess he didn't want the one percent. I I. I can argue both sides, which makes it very difficult for me to decide what is real. What you say is completely spot on. Uh, people don't realize while we have a one percent cap, there's nothing else around us ever that has a one percent cap. And uh. The argument that hmm some folks would say been taxed enough already, just start to. Pull in the, pull in the belt. And and you'll never pull in the belt. By taking more taxes. However, this one is well below what. I mean, this would, even if we took the one percent, it would amount to a belt. Tightening exercise. And I think it was Thomas Hall said he can't think of a more. Uh, stupid system than uh one in which the decision makers don't pay the penalty. And what we have are decision makers all over the place who think it's not my money, it's their money, so it's free money. How do we break that?
Yeah, that that's always tough because I have a fundamental belief that. Money in the, in the taxpayer's hand generates much more than. Money in our hand.
That's a fact, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've seen it.
Worldwide.
Yeah. So I I I could go with our colleague if we didn't want that one percent. In this assumption, we can, we can, when we see the final numbers, we can, we can figure that out.
Yeah, I can, I can lay out what the one percent is.
So, so just to be sure, understand, uh you you would take out the one percent. And uh we don't do a catch up from from twenty two. So that would be roughly five hundred thousand.
Yes.
Oh, well.
You have some construction, um new construction that's built into this number as well. So. Levy him out.
I'm okay with that.
We can at least look at the numbers.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Same for road.
Now, the the deadline for setting the levy is that Wednesday? Is that the first of November or is it the first of December?
It's it's November thirtieth.
November thirtieth, okay.
And we're going to have a special public hearing, uh which has already been publicized. To be November the twenty eighth, I believe.
Sounds about right, yeah.
So. It's mu- it's your Tuesday meeting. Um, the twenty eighth. That's our public hearing. And it's been publicized already for setting the actual levies.
In 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 past history that. Like to you, Dennis, uh we've, we've got to the point where we'll present the budget to the. To the public and uh. I don't recall any big discussions. I do recall once that Joe Gardner voted against it. Because he didn't want to shift.
Right.
The road fund.
That was one year and I I think he opposed it just once.
Yeah.
And then, and then uh it it worked out. But once the road department changed their policies and. Dropped down their their pending fund balance, then we just went away from the shift at all.
Yeah.
When I, when I joined, the diversion was the the adjustment to the property tax and uh. Like I said, I I thought it wasn't worth the money to document it and it was a relatively small amount. And uh, so I. That's when I, that's when I brought up the shift and and we did that for five or six years.
I don't think we had much choice back then, but but we do now and the the one thing about the road fund is. At the end of the day, a citizen can stand there and say, well, we built that bridge. Or we fixed those potholes and uh when it goes into the general fund, I'm not sure what you can say as clearly as that.
And we, and we have taken some pretty important steps. To restructure the public works department. I mean, we're on our third engineer since I first came. The direction has changed and which is, which is good and and I'm I'm pretty. I am definitely pleased with with how that's all being managed and the projects that we're able to tackle each year and. And uh the grants we're able to get and leverage those revenues, so. Besides, Susan's listening to us.
Oh, she is.
At a girl.
Okay, so those, that's really the only things that I had today was just to make sure that. I have my direction straight on levy amounts that are included in our revenues.
Okay.
And then tomorrow we'll have a workshop in the afternoon at one thirty. Um, to actually show total revenues, total anticipated expenses. And I will also bring forth all the requests for funding. Um, to make sure that I have. Um, that we go through those to make sure what's included and what's.
You're you're gonna. We're gonna have to work, earn our salary tomorrow then, right?
Long meeting. Tomorrow.
It's it's, it is important. Uh, it would also be um helpful, I I, to me, if you, if you could calculate. Um, wh- what our policy is for ending fund balances, if I remember correctly, it's the one month salary. Just so that we have that in mind is is kind of. You have to have that as a minimum and.
Yeah, I think it's a a percent.
Yeah, eight.
Eight percent.
Eight point two or eight point four, something like that, whatever it works out.
I thought it was closer to two months than a month.
Well, that's, that's been our past practice, but the policy, I don't think we've changed the policy.
Oh.
But.
Yeah, I'm okay not changing the policy. I'm okay not changing to two months.
Yeah. The the only thing that we did this year was your cumulative, um your. Uh, budget stabilization fund, we said we would not contribute to the budget stabilization fund. Once we met two months. Of of content, of fund balance. I think that's what you're remembering.
Two months.
I can't remember, I don't remember that, but.
Okay, anything else you want to see tomorrow when I bring forth everything?
No, although I'm thinking.
That's scary enough.
It's scary day tomorrow. Yeah, I'm thinking three months would be more my style under reserve stuff and. In the past, I felt. That's dollars that aren't doing anything for us, but with their new investment policy, it's not quite so severe. We're still losing to inflation, I'm pretty sure, but. Rainy day funds, I mean, my own personal rainy day. Funds are much longer than two months.
Yeah. Okay.
Why is Emily burking?
I just wanna go.
I thought you enjoyed it here. Sorta. We don't see enough of you up here. Now you know how we all feel.
Okay. We all good?
Think so, yeah.
Yeah, I not seen, I don't see any.
We don't have, we don't have public service coming in today.
No. They all.
We've got the board of health tomorrow, right?
Board health at ten tomorrow. See if we can get through the agenda before ten.
That'll be uh.
It was pretty light, but.
It it looked pretty decent, so. Sometimes uh. HHS stuff can get. Participation and comments, so.
Yeah.
Any other miscellaneous? Any other miscellaneous? I don't see any hands. Wheel adjourned. Thanks. Thanks, Kathy.